Council meeting, regular meeting. On this, the first of November.
You sure of the town?
What's that? Oh, we're in the town. I know where the town is.
Do you have one for Deb?
Roll call? Betsy?
Thank you.
And Deb's right there, so.
Yes, I see her. So, roll call, we have Mayor Flax, we have Counselor Dean Antipas, Counselor Diane Barber, Counselor Greg Grimm, Counselor Karen Morton, Counselor Bonnie Nalt, Counselor Deb Perizzati, and Counselor Harry Watson, and absent would be Counselor Joe Dela Cruz, unless he shows up.
Thank you. Next, we have the salute to the flag. You guys want to, well, we'll all go together?
Sure.
All go together.
Deb, you want to give us the first word?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
There are no recognitions, awards, and memorials, which brings us to receipt of citizens' petitions. This is the portion of the council agenda where the council welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councils will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during their responses to citizens' petitions portion of the town council meeting. Citizens should make their presentation for the lectern and state their name and addresses for the record. No?
Nice speech.
What's that?
Nice speech.
Thank you. We have two people signed up, I'm guessing?
No, no one signed up.
Oh, yes, the man in the back.
The man in the back.
Good evening. Kevin Trejo, 536 Shandakhasett Road. I figure nobody's in a rush to go home to the game because Boston's not playing, right, Mayor?
But the Cubs are just like Boston, so.
I'm here tonight as a member of the 2020 PAC, which is the Groton Public Schools. I served on the task force. And over the past 16 years, I've either been for or against something with the school referendums. But this one is coming to fruition on November 8th. So, Northeast Academy's PTO has invited the Groton School 2020 PAC to have a forum at their location at 115 Oslo Street, Thursday night, 6:30 November 3rd. We will go there and explain the situation of the plan, why it's, I believe it's much better to vote for this plan instead of being stuck with about $63 million of catching things just up to code. I mean, figure it out. Like, someone mentioned to me the other day, if you're going to buy a power saw, and you can buy a used one at $63 million, and you can get a brand-new one, let's make it just $63, and you can get a brand-new one for $184 with the $100 rebate, making it $84, doesn't it make sense to get a brand-new saw? So, what we want to do more so, instead of telling you or the public what to vote, come out, listen to what we have to say, ask your questions, and then weigh it yourselves and make an educated decision. Just don't go to the polls and vote one way or the other without knowing what it's really about. Because if you vote no, my opinion, it's going to cost your money anyway. So, let's find out what it's going to cost the public by doing it and not doing it. So, I ask any counselor who wants to come out, fine. The public, again, Northeast Academy, 115 Oslo Street, November 3rd, 6:30 at the school. And if anybody else wants to follow up with some more information and can't make it, Groton Schools 2020 Plan on Facebook, you can see some information and things like that there, too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Greg?
Hi, I'm Craig Kohler from 263 Brook Street. I'm the co-chairman of the Groton Schools 2020 PAC. Good to be back here. Again, just what Kevin said, we are having another public forum this Thursday at Northeast Academy. I hope people at home, if you're watching, come on out at 6:30. We do a brief presentation. We open it up to questions and answers. We held two of these last week. They were very civil. I think a lot of information was out there because this is a big vote. And I believe the more information that the voters have, the more informed you'll be. And you'll see that this is the right plan and that you will come out and vote yes on November 8th. Additionally, on our website, thegrotonschools2020.org, we did have put a calculator out there for people, so if you want to punch in the value of your home, you can see an estimated value of what the project will cost you. As I've mentioned before, the average cost of this plan is $124 annually for each $100,000 of assessed value. 65% of the homes in Groton are valued at $300,000 or less, which means that 65% of the households would spend $260 annually or less for this project. And I shouldn't say spend, I should say invest, because I see this as an investment in our town and in our schools and in our kids. And again, I think it's important to come out and vote yes on November 8th. It's a $20 million decision, as far as I'm concerned. $63 million of repair work with nothing to show for it, or $84 million bonded at the lowest historical interest rates available for us that can be budgeted over the next 25 years, and have three state-of-the-art schools, and enhance the education value for the kids in this town. One question that's come up that I want to just bring to the council, and I know it won't be this council, but it will be a council that's come up in my discussions with people, is they want to know what will become of the three schools, Pleasant Valley, Colchester, and S.B. Butler, if this project goes through and those schools are then turned back to the town council. I know, and I want people at home to know, that once they're turned back to the town council at that time, it's up to the council and the town to decide what is to be done with those schools. If we look at a timeline, those elementary schools at the earliest would be turned back in the 2022-2023 fiscal year. So, to ask this council what's going to happen with those schools is not appropriate. But at least I want to bring it out so that the discussion, if the referendum is passed, that we can start thinking about what might be the best economic uses of those properties, and what would enhance the economic development the most in the town. And the sooner that that can be discussed, I think, would be the better. Lastly, I just have a question because the explanatory text for the referendum fell out of the inserts of my Groton Times last week. In the past, I always thought that it was appropriate that we got a mailing that was sent to all of the people in town so that people could have a little bit more information about a project. And I think a project of this magnitude should have had a separate mailing that went out instead of just being in a handout amongst the other circulars of advertisements that, you know, I was on the way to the recycling bin when it fell out and I saw it. And I think I'm a little bit involved in the project and understand what's going on. So, I guess that was just a question as to why it was just mailed out. I know it's on the town website. I've directed people to it. We've put it on our town website. But I think when we're looking at a project of this magnitude, something like that should be mailed directly to the people of the town. So, lastly, again, public forum this Thursday, Northeast Academy, 6:30 to 8:00. If you have questions, please come out. You want to ask questions, more than welcome to have everybody there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is a response to citizens' petitions. Anybody? Yes, Bonnie?
I would like to know, what, how did we send that out? I don't know if it's to you or to Mark.
How we send the referendum?
I mean, was it in the, was it in the newspaper?
That's what the procedure we've been doing for the last four referendums is inserting it because it gets into every single household.
It went in what?
Well, in the past, we just used who was registered to vote, which instead of you, instead of doing, and then mailing is, would be, you know, 47 cents per thing, so it's cost-effective.
So, it was in which paper?
Also, remember that we're not required to provide explanatory text. That's a decision that the council makes and how it's maneuvered. So, and I presented it to the council and didn't hear any disagreements about that.
So, was it inserted in which paper?
In the Mystic Times and the Groton Times. So, that goes to every single household that went, it was received on October 20th. And I've gotten great response from people coming in voting absentee. I have to tell you, they've all, because I handed them another one when they vote absentee, and they, oh, we've got that in our circular. We've got that in our circular.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, just for the benefit of the viewers, I know I've gotten questions. I'm sure others have gotten questions. People want to know what I think of the project and how I'm voting. And I can't pinpoint the source, the authority for this, and there may be no authority, but I'll take it as tradition that counselors, having voted to place an item on the ballot for a referendum, are traditionally reticent to discuss the pros and cons. I've entered into conversations about the subject matter without, you know, going pro or con, but I'm only following what I understood was a tradition that we are to remain mum. I will, I'm happy to be corrected. Maybe that's just a minority view. But that's how I've been taking it so far. So, if people haven't heard from me or anybody else about, you know, rooting the palm, you know, throwing the pom-poms, one position or the other, the yes or the no, that's why.
Thank you. Deb?
My thoughts on that are, every referendum decision comes in front of the town council, and whether we choose to be for or against, the majority always rules. The majority stands by the majority. I think what we choose to do in our personal life, outside of newspaper, media, television, I think is our own personal choice, as long as we continue to understand and explain that as a group of the town council, for the town, we chose, as a majority, to support this project moving forward. And there's always going to be pros and cons with everything that comes in front of us all the time. It doesn't matter. But I think it's still very, very important, and this is one thing that I have always said, on any referendum, any decision that we've made as a town council, is the majority rules. The majority supports any project moving forward. And that is still where I stand. It is still where I project myself moving forward. And that's what we chose, as a town council, as one.
Thank you.
That's, if I might.
Harry?
I think I might have said something. Once we pass an ordinance, whether we happen to be in the majority or the minority, whether we want to, but if the majority of the council puts something forward to ordinance, I think we have to be careful about spending town funds rooting for one side or the other. I think that that is, that's the stick we're here. And television is town funds. We're paying somebody to be here, is the way I interpret it, so.
Thank you. Dean?
Yeah, I, just to clarify, I'm not carrying on the fight of the minority or anything like that. We clearly understand that the council has moved forward. I'm happy to tell people that the council, I don't remember unanimously, because we've had several votes on this thing unanimously, or the majority, or whatever it was, voted yes on the thing. And our very last vote was to vote to put it on the ballot for a referendum. That's true. I've got no problem restating that one. But when I'm asked as a counselor, are you for or against, again, my position would be, the council is in favor. You're correct. But I'm asked, am I for or against? Not as a person, but as a counselor. So, in that, in that situation, I'm reticent to go to say one thing or the other. That's my point.
Counselor Noh?
I went to the 2020 meeting last Thursday, and I voiced my own personal opinion, which I think I'm entitled to do because I vote in town. And I don't see, I didn't say, people may have known I was a counselor. I didn't represent myself as a counselor when I got up to speak, so.
Well, I think to Harry's point, you know, makes a lot of sense that this is a town-sponsored broadcast using town funds. You going to a open meeting to express your opinion is certainly fine. Great. I'd just like to move the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion to move in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes eight to zero to zero, which brings us to communications and reports. Counselor Noh?
I went to the Groton Utilities Quarterly Meeting on 10/26, which was kind of interesting since it's been making the front page. And I got a copy of the disc, if anybody would like to listen to that meeting. And then that night, I, along with the town manager and Deb Jones, and I'm not sure who else was there, went to a really terrific millennial and senior housing event up at Three Rivers College, and they had some really fantastic ideas for economic development. And I'm proud to say that lots of them that are Economic Development Planning Department are already working on, so, thanks to all the good work of the people that are in our town. And on the, as I said, I went to the 2020 meeting Thursday, and on Friday, I was fortunate enough to represent the town in Coast Guard Regimental Review, the last one of the year. So, it was fun.
How was that? It was nice?
It was very nice, and they had a lovely reception at the Coast Guard Academy Superintendent's Home afterwards.
Counselor Grimm?
Nothing to report.
Counselor Watson?
I have nothing to report.
Counselor Perizzati?
Nothing to report.
Barber. Counselor Barber?
Nothing to report.
Counselor Morton?
I have nothing to report, but I would like to comment. I think we all got a copy of the email exchange that went between Chief Rich in Ledger to Chief Assaro, indicating that the Ledger Police Department is now open for business and with a fully functional holding facility, and thanking us and Chief Assaro's response to that. And I think it's just important because this was a, really helped to reinforce the bond that exists between all of the local police departments. And I think in this area, it's a necessity because you can't have too many people responding if something really big happens. And I think we really solidified our relationship in Groton with the town of Ledger, so, pleased about that.
Counselor Davis?
Yes. Let's see, on October 20th, I attended the Martin Luther King Jr., Reverend Martin Luther King Jr.'s scholarship dinner, and second year in a row. That's the same night that I had to be for the quarterly meeting of the Representative Advisory Board of the Southeast Connecticut Water Authority. And I couldn't make that one, that was in Monfield, so that appears on my attendance, my attendance record for that body. That's why I was at that event, and it was lovely, as always. Pack crowd, outstanding kids. On the 29th, I was at the Commissioning of the Illinois, very early, along with most other, most of the hoi polloi, probably for security reasons. But that was pretty cool. That seemed to be a word that everybody was using. And one last thing, I handed out an excerpt from minutes from November 2008, talking about budget guidelines for fiscal year ending 2010, just to illustrate that, you know, we keep spinning the same wheels. The read discussion is a little unique in a couple of respects, but, you know, what's old is, what's old is new. The Stat Council was also trying to figure out what to do in terms of sending out guidelines for developing, developing the budgets. I recommend that as an interesting read. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I also attended the Martin Luther King Dinner. I attended a S.B. Butler PTO meeting. I attended on October 19th, the COG meeting. And on the 29th, I was at the Commissioning of the USS Illinois, which was a great, really exciting event, and very cool. We have a couple of things coming up, just, I think, there's been some emails going back and forth, but we're looking to meet with the Board of Ed on November 15th prior to the council meeting. That's going to be at 6:00. And we also have an RTM Town Council meeting scheduled for the 16th at 7:00. I think this is at the Senior Center. We'll be discussing, just a general discussion about budget. There's an agenda put together that you guys will see, and so that is upcoming.
The 16th?
So, we'll move along here to the clerk of the representative town meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. The RTM is scheduled to meet next week, November 9th, at the Groton Senior Center at 7:30 PM, where they will discuss the referral from the town council. It's referral number 2016-0236, which is the fiscal year ending 2017 contingency transfer for the United Steelworkers Wages.
Great.
That's for the RTM.
Yeah, before I go to the clerk of the council, I do, and perhaps you could, I meant to say this also, so, voting is next Tuesday, and I wanted to make sure that people, the last year when we voted at the Fitch High School, there was a school meeting, like a regional school meeting going on. And I think that it's been taken care of, right? There's parking that's been set aside.
I will double-check with.
Please, because I know that that, I know the school meeting is still going on, and I know the location of voting hasn't changed for District 7.
Yeah, it's District 7. I'll be talking to Dr. Greenier tomorrow about other matters, and I'll mention that, too.
And then also, just to let people know that I know it's contentious presidential year, no matter which side you're on, but remember that there are local issues that are important to come out and vote. So, you don't want to vote for president, don't, but come out and vote for your state and Senate reps and for the referendums going on. So, that's it. I forgot to say that. So, clerk of the council.
Perfect segue to the town clerk. Okay, so, the clerk of the council, I report that absentee ballots are still available for the election next week. They're up, they're available to anyone who's not going to be present any time of voting hours, so that's 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And that could mean that you're working for the poll worker, not at your actual poll, or it could be that you're visiting someone in another town in Connecticut, but you're going to be. So, I can receive, I can issue a ballot up until the day before the election, so that would be the 7th of, it's Monday, the 7th. And we'll receive ballots back up until 8:00 PM on election night. They're counted at a central counting, which will be at the high school, Fitch High School in the cafeteria. That's where all the absentee ballots will be counted. So, I also wanted to tell you that we've, as of this evening, we've issued 1,368 absentee ballots, which is a record.
Wow. How many?
1,368 absentee ballots.
Holy mack.
Thank you very much.
Been busy.
I also wanted to report that I received two reappointment applications from the Democratic Town Committee, which I forwarded to the Appointments and Personnel Committee. And I also attended the ceremony, promotion ceremony for Patrol Sergeant Richard Sawyer. He was promoted to that position, and I administered the oath of office. That was on October 27th. And then we also received the communication that you reported on from Moderator Newsom regarding the joint meeting with the RTM and the town council, which is scheduled for the 16th at 7:00 PM at the Groton Senior Center.
Great.
There you go.
Thank you. Counselor Noh?
Betsy, how many were issued the last presidential election? Do you have any, like, roughly?
Little, little more than half of that.
Huh. Oh, that's interesting.
Mark?
Thank you. Just, these are just upcoming meeting dates because of the election, there are some changes and so forth. So, we have a COW meeting next Wednesday, not Tuesday, Wednesday, the 9th, at 6:00 PM. And as the clerk noted, there's also an RTM meeting that night at 7:30. I'm suspecting there probably will be a committee meeting. So, I will be here for the beginning of the council meeting, but I probably won't be here for the end of it. So, we'll have somebody here to cover. The COW agenda for next week, I did have a chance to review it with the, with the mayor. There's a number of deletions, I won't bore you with that. But we are going to put on, just for discussion purposes, we have a bunch of standing referrals with respect to meetings, either with the city, the Board of Ed, Groton Long Point, our legislators, Mayor and I talked about Stonington. Going to put that on there simply to kind of get a sense from the council if you would like to meet with any of these groups and when. So, that should be a fairly quick, that should be a fairly quick discussion. We also have, potentially, we're going to be in a position to update you on the tax incentive agreement on Branford Manor. Let's see, review of town services slash the FYE 2018 budget, I'll put back on there for follow-up discussion, specifically with an eye on if you're going to meet with the Board of Ed, you're going to meet with the RTM, you may want to have kind of an outline of issues that you want to be able to review with them. The, possibly, the LED streetlight conversion project will be ready to go next week. And we have a number of grants. We have a Rotary Club of Mystic grant for the library, a potential agreement with the Lincoln Center concerning the Senior Center and some free programming, televised programming, and then a grant request, or a grant that the Leglite Health District has recently submitted to us. We've gotten in the habit of running by the Leglite Health District grant request by the council, because the thought being that the sources of funding that they're going for may be sources of funding that a town department would also want to go for. That's not the case here. They had to get the grant in, so we're, I'm bringing it to you kind of after the fact. Lastly, I did want to, well, not lastly, let me, let me continue here. The, this Friday at 7:30 AM at the Marriott is the Military Appreciation Breakfast, which is a very nice event. And as was noted, we do have a joint meeting with the Board of Ed and Town Council on the 15th at 6:00, and then a joint meeting with the RTM on the 16th. Lastly, I do want to just know, kind of put a plug in for our town historian, Jim Streeter, and also William Tisher, who have recently published a book, an Arcadia book, on the, believe it or not, well, you all know this, 23 of Groton's past and present emergency services departments. And Jim and Bill are going to be doing some book signings. The first one is this Saturday, or first one I'm mentioning is this Saturday at the library from 12 to 3 o'clock. Then on Sunday, the 6th, they're going to be at the Albright K-9 Facility up in Colchester off of Route 85. On the 12th, from 9:00 AM to 2:30 PM, the 12th is a Saturday, they'll be at the Fitch High School Booster Club. On Monday, the 28th, from 6:00 to 8:00, they'll be at the Bill Memorial Library. And last but not least, on Saturday, the 10th of December, from 6:00 to 9:00, will be a public safety night, beer tasting at Par Four. And I do want to note that a portion of the proceeds from this book will be going to the Bridgeport Burn Center, and then the royalties from the book are being donated to the Salvation Army's canteen truck. Most of you have seen Arcadia book, lots of pictures, but great narratives. I think Bill and Jim have done a great job. It's a very interesting book, and if you want to look at it after the meeting, I'll have it.
Great.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. With regards to the, the streetlight, it should be, you know, I think you mentioned it before, but I took a look tonight, that there's, on coming up Fort Hill, are, there's actually four lights. Is it two and two? They're different kinds, or are they all the same?
They're different intensities. 3,000 and 4,000 Kelvin.
So, people driving up Fort Hill can see the new, the potential new streetlights and the intensity, and give us your opinion if you have one regarding.
They are, you know, they're becoming more and more prevalent in the region. I mean, a good part of I-95, 395, Route 32, the state's already converted to LED.
I mean, you can see that they're less yellow, they're more white, maybe green.
And there's less, when you're at a distance, you really don't see the light at all because the light bulb doesn't hang. the light bulb doesn't hang down below the shroud. Their night skies friendly, as it's called. They work really- I mean, particularly on 95 and 395 and 32, if you travel those.
And the head's smaller, the head of the- maybe it's smaller, so.
So, I probably should have brought this up in Communications, but I- someone brought to my attention, which I have seen a few times, right across from the infamous Shell Station Package Door where Sully's used to be Ryans, there's this really interesting fence that came out of nowhere. It- was there a permit for that, or how does that happen?
I doubt it. It is something we're looking into.
Okay.
I'm not sure it's even on private property. It may be on town property. It's a big hunk of tin metal, probably from a metal building somewhere, that's been tacked onto a couple of trees. There may have been a problem with people cutting through there. I don't know.
I'm assuming that that is why they have finally probably put something so obnoxious in place to prevent things like that, but it was very interesting. It was brought to my attention, and then I actually saw it, and I was wondering what was happening with that. Okay. So, we're trying to follow up on that and see if there's something we can maybe do.
Thank you. Committee reports? Harry? Dean, any rules, committee?
Yeah, not so much a committee report, but it's something I thought of today. I just took a moment to put together a few thoughts, because we keep talking about, you know, whatever happened to other business and why can't we make referrals? And I think a lot of us may feel stymied. And so, I just, again, as I said, I took a moment to put together about a page and a half of my thoughts about the rules, and I have a couple of recommendations. Well, one's not really a recommendation. Way, way back, we used to have unfinished, new, and then other business. And then at some point, I think the prior council got rid of unfinished business, so whatever was unfinished got stuffed into new business, whether it was new or not. And other was, I guess, our cue for asking for referrals. The problem I thought, and we took out other business, the problem I thought with other business was it was a possible window to add things and discuss things that were not posted on the agenda, which is a contravention of FOIA. And you don't really need other business to make a referral. I think we can go through our normal order of business, and then at the end, you can say, "Okay, we've gone through our normal order of business," and not so much to solicit other business, which you can do in a private organization. Anybody else have anything else to say kind of thing? We can't do that. But that would be the time when we would say, "I'd like to have something discussed. I'd like it to refer to our Cow or a committee that we set up," or something like that, not to discuss it, just-
Bring it up.
Just bring it up. So, we don't need a separate item of other businesses, but that's just my, like, page and a half, my two cents.
Thank you. Councilor, do you think that you need to have the Rules Committee meet to discuss it, or because it's in- or because it's already done, it's- you're just clarifying?
Yeah, I don't know whether we need a specific referral for this item or whether the Rules Committee can meet on its own, under its own steam without a referral.
Seems to me that's what the Rules Committee is for, but-
Okay. Kind of like appointments, yeah. Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Harry, you agree?
I agree.
All right. There you go.
You're on this too, right?
The Town Council Board of Education Joint Task Force did meet a few weeks ago, and we're meeting again tomorrow night at 6:30. And meeting minutes have been sent to the appropriate places, so if anybody is curious or interested, they can look there or give me a call. Which brings us to- oh, and Committee of the Home met last week as well with a number of different topics, some of which will be on the voting agenda today under new business. Which brings us to new business, 2013-0249 Parking Ticket Fees. Councilor Perezati?
I'd love to. To 2013?
Yeah.
Well, all right then. 2013-0249 Parking Ticket Fees Resolution Authorizing Preparation of an Ordinance for Parking Violation, Non-Resident Fingerprint, Solicitor Permit, and Animal Control Fees. Whereas the Town Council has considered increasing and/or establishing various fees in the Police Department as authorized by Connecticut general statutes, and whereas a survey of surrounding town fees reveal that increasing the town of Groton's fees would make them consistent with other towns in the region, now therefore be resolved that the Town Council authorizes and directs town staff and the town attorney to prepare an ordinance for parking violation, non-resident fingerprint, solicitor permit, and animal control fees for the Town Council's review. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilor Perezati, a second by Councilor Morton. Any discussion on this? Councilor Antebas?
Yeah, very briefly. Just to recap what I said the last week, because it's not totally accurately reflected in here. By the way, it says Counselor Streeter, so I don't know how he slipped in here.
I think it was 2013.
Oh, it was, okay. But this whole paragraph, though, okay. I know it's a 2013 item. Anyway, so my concern was raising fees could hit people that, you know, may be in a bad position to afford them with no real revenue for the town, but no real impact on, no deterrent either. And as was represented to me, there really would be a deterrent if the fees were brought into line with the surrounding towns. On that basis, I would support it, but it still- it still remains a concern of mine because lots of towns have all sorts of fees, and people do get nickled and dimed, and there really is no real deterrent, and there really is no income. It's just, you know, people pay and nothing really happens, so. But I'll support it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? No, Councilor?
Yeah, I just want to mention that this is just another example of our Chief of Police really stepping up and doing a good job and getting things where they should be. So, I guess that's all I wanted to say.
Right on. Thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes eight to zero to zero. Councilor Barbara, can you give us the 2016-0254?
I sure can. Resolution authorizing the submission of a Recreation Trails Grant Application, whereas Groton Parks and Recreation is seeking authorization to apply for a $100,000 grant from the State of Connecticut to fund the construction of two trail projects within the Cop Property Park. And whereas the total project cost is $125,000, with the town's required 20% match of $25,000 coming from funds approved in the FYE 2015 Capital Improvement Program, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Manager, Mark R. Olfinger, or his designee, is authorized to apply for a grant in the amount of $100,000 from the State of Connecticut Recreational Trails Grant Program for two trail construction projects within the Cop Family Park. I so moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilor Barbara, a second by Councilor Nolan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes eight to zero to zero. Councilor Morton, could you take us to the final?
Yes. 2016-0256 Merit Property Conversion. Resolution authorizing approval of memorandum of understanding for conversion of merit property to non-conservation use. Whereas the town of Groton purchased the merit property on Fort Hill slash Groton Long Point Road for the future construction of recreation fields. And whereas the town of Groton proposes to build a new combined middle school on the merit property consistent with the Groton 2020 school plan. And whereas the town of Groton is proposing to substitute the Boulder Heights property located at the end of Culver Avenue for the merit property for future recreation use. And whereas in the future, the town will plan for the development of recreational trails and/or fields in the Boulder Heights property. And whereas these property changes will serve the needs of the town, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council hereby authorizes the Town Manager to sign a memorandum of understanding and all of the necessary documentation between the town of Groton and the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection to remove the recreation and conservation restrictions on the merit property. I so moved.
Second. We have a motion by Councilor Morton, a second by Councilor Watson. Any discussion on this? Councilor?
Do we still control the trigger on this as far as other things?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Can we ask? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes eight to zero to zero.
I move. We adjourn.
Second.
We adjourn.
Go cut.